If you want to make public comment, we welcome that. But we want to record that you were here. There's a sign up sheet in front of a microphone that is located right at the end of that table. Please put your name and your address on that. And then when you get the microphone, state your name and your address because we're going to capture as much of this information as notes as we can so we can, number one, prove it in council that this is who we heard, but number two, it formalizes that you came here and what you said and what your concerns may have been or your questions. You're limited to one comment tonight. If not, I know we've done this before, many people come over again and again. So one time comment, we'd ask that you try to limit that to three minutes, but we understand nobody's got a stopwatch here. You know, we understand you've got concerns and we want to hear those. Council is here to listen. They do not have to answer any questions unless they choose to do so. So with that being said, that's kind of the ground rules to this process. So if anybody would like to make public comment, please, you can begin to move that way. As y'all are doing it, I will tell you that from myself, my standpoint, I lived here in Buffalo, right down the road on the Bailey Road for six years. This is a wonderful community. I know I don't want to be here tonight talking about what we're going to do with the Buffalo Mill property. I wished it was still, back in 1987, when I moved in this community in United Merchants, was still turning out product. It was a wonderful mill and I know some of y'all from the fire department are here, we fought a lot of fire over there and enjoyed every minute of it and they fed us well after we got through. So I got the chief in the back agreeing to that. I know none of council wants to be here. This is really, we wished this had not have happened, but it has and we need to move forward from it and that was the reason for tonight to hear what your thoughts are. So with that being said, please, we'll wait a few minutes.
Tommy Ford, I live it on the Lyon River Road in Buffalo. I talked to a few of the city councilmen just a little bit ago and they assured me that Buffalo would not be trying to annex into the city. I know several years ago, they tried to do it before and the people in Buffalo kind of pitched their fit and stopped it, but it was under a different council and a different mayor and a different superintendent. I understand that we're going to turn this over to the city and after it's cleaned up, it's five years before you can do anything with it. Okay, is that a verbal agreement or is that something that we need, I mean, you know, if it's just a verbal agreement, I think it's something that should be put on paper. The reason being, it's not because I don't trust anybody, but in five years, both councils may be changed. The whole thing may change around. I'll give you an example. A few years ago, when this thing was cleaned up, that council, and I know because I was on it, when it was cleaned up, there was an agreement that said that the mill property, when it was cleaned up, something would be done for the citizens of Buffalo, like walking trails, maybe a park for the kids and a place down below where they could have their yard sales, have their festivals and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering, you know, what happens after the five years? I mean, you know, I think it should be something that should be put on paper, that agreement between the two, the city and the county.
Tommy, I appreciate that. I will address that the five year limit doesn't come from county council. That comes from the cleanup process as itself. You cannot go and dig on the property as it stood beforehand because we had not sampled it, we had not removed anything, we would have had to have left it undisturbed. That's the reason why no construction's been done.
Right.
Now, there are various degrees that you can use this grant to clean up. The strangest, most stringent is green space. Yes, there's other grants that they could have for cleanup that we could have chosen even gone to CBDG and made a request for housing. But if you choose to do that, then it has to be low to moderate income housing. What council thought, I believe in all of our conversations, what we felt was it was best to get the mill cleaned up to the most clean as it we could. Now, we are restricted by grant if we can't do anything for five years. After the five years is up, then you can look forward as to what does the community want and move forward with redevelopment. But that is codified in writing because that's the grant requirement.
Okay, but in writing, is it in writing that the city turns it back over to the county after five years?
That right now is not anything we can entertain because we don't have a grant yet and we don't want to stop anything from causing us to be able to get the grant.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I just want to say first and foremost, I'm glad there's not as much contaminants as they thought there were going to be.
Name and address.
Leslie Swigart, 212 Bailey Road, Buffalo, South Carolina. My question is regarding the site in Jonesville. How was that project financed and, you know, is that something that the county is doing? And if so, how can the county not do the Buffalo side if they're doing the Jonesville site as well?
Thank you for the question. Great question. That is for the town of Jonesville. That's not something that county is taking on. So it was a phased approach. Earlier when I spoke, I talked about the all appropriate inquiry process, having that phase one within 180 days of purchase. Town of Jonesville did that when they took title to the property. Town of Jonesville also entered into a voluntary cleanup contract at that time with South Carolina DHA when that was taken. It was taken over a decade ago, so it took a long time to get to this point, but they followed very much the similar process as what the Buffalo Mill is. The property was assessed through EPA grants, through the town regional council governments that were given to us to assist there. And then from there, they started applying for grants. There's a CDVG element that has been there. We've used some additional assessment money as things have been discovered on that property just to get it to where it is. So the big difference to the question of why can't the county do that is simply because of the way the ownership title was taken to the property. And that's nothing that is happening because of anything at the state level, that's happening because of, at the federal level with the circle law that governs this. And so we have to act within there. So I had, building on that question, how do we get to something like what Jonesville has done or even Great Falls? Great Falls has done everything through the town of Great Falls. Chester County has not been involved in that project from a grant perspective. It was the same process there. They did all the inquiry steps on the front end. The way to rectify that, if a public body is going to clean it up, is to restart that process. And so we could assist there with whomever would take title to it from a public perspective, walk them through that and then set this project up to be turned into one of those. Great question.
Brian Gordon, 201 Sweetwater Drive. I know y'all talking about this and this, right? What about this? Is that included with it? I think where the rail car, when the train came in and offloaded the coal, cotton, those cotton, is that included with this?
Not in this assessment, but that's under a different ownership.
Okay, I didn't know that. That's why I asked the question.
We're only doing what the county has.
Okay.
Do you write your name in?
Yes.
Howard Johnson, 199 Cannon Lane. I guess everybody in Buffalo knows about me. I'm the one that took the mill down and had a lot of problems there, but I can tell you that we buried nothing. I can tell you that. And also, Tommy asked the question about in the future, can you get anything in writing? I also took down and cleaned up the mill in downtown Union, the Union Mill. And when I made an agreement with Mr. Potts to sell the property to the city, Mr. Potts told me, he said, "I'll give you this much for the property and guarantee you the right to decollet the concrete up, clean the property up. If you even want to fact check me, you can go check the deed at the courthouse. It's recorded on that deed." One day I went by there and there's a whole construction crew out there working. I went up to Mr. Potts and I said, "Wait a minute. Your agreement with me was to do this." He said, "Get the hell out of my office. I do any damn thing I want to in this city. I'm going to tell you something. If you don't get it in writing and when you get it in writing, they do what they want to do." So I'm just telling you, this happened to me. I'm not against anybody in here. I know Mr. Potts is no longer there. I'd love to see the property developed. I own the property around it. I still own that. But I'm just saying that from my experience with this kind of stuff, you can get it in writing and somebody in higher level will tell you what they do. So that's my comment. Thank you.
There has not been a amount of what it's actually going to cost to clean this up, correct? What's the plans for it after it's cleaned up by the city? Or what are their plans for it?
One of the, I'm not going to speak for Joe and this is not a city council meeting as much a county council hearing, but Mr. Nichols and I have talked, along with some of our council members, at great length of what we would like for that to be or what it could be more so than anything. I really think that we need to get past the five years of green space and get it cleaned up, get it where it is green space. It can be used and it can be used as a park in that process of time. At the end of that five year period of time, that's when we can gather back as a community and see what the future is. There's nobody on this council that wants to do anything that the general public doesn't want to have. If we were worried about, and I'm speaking for myself, I mean, we could have gone and done LMI housing, but I don't think that's what Buffalo wants. I don't think that's what Union County wants. And I know that's not what my council wants. So our thought was, let's go get it cleaned up. Let's make sure that if there are any hazards under the ground, let's get it gone while we can do this through a grant process. Yes, it's federal funds, it's state funds, but it's not county funds or city funds. Let's get it cleaned up and then let's not stop the process of moving forward. The cleanup is the first step. Sounds like to me, this is going to be the best step, but it gives us the best step foot forward to what we want to do at the end of five years. Now, Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you. I saw you come behind me.
Well, I have one more question too, if you don't mind.
The foot go far away.
Why don't we, instead of doing grants, why doesn't the county just clean it up anyway? Without the grant money?
We don't know how much it's going to cost. Why, you know, what's the difference? County ain't got money to do it?
I'm not going to sit here and tell you that the county's broke, but I will tell you that we can't, we don't have an open checkbook. And if we're going through this process, that's exactly what it would take without any federal government assistance. So the answer to the question is, no, I don't think council, either councils would walk into either one of these or county council, walk in to go clean up the property with an open checkbook, not knowing what the end's going to be, because we respect the fact that those are county taxpayers' funds, both from Buffalo or Carlisle or Lockhart or anywhere else across our county. This is a way we can get it cleaned up and we can get it done and it give us time to figure out what is the future use and we don't have to use our funds to do so. We don't want to see anybody's taxes go up. And our fund balance, while we do have six months of operating fund balance, that's kind of a requirement that you want to keep and we get kind of gigged on that if we don't have that in the bank because we never know is there for emergencies.
Don't we still have grant money for the pond as well, on that being cleaned up and redone?
There is an ARC grant for the pond. That ARC grant was in the works prior to me taking office two years ago and you want to talk about frustrating, I got an office full of council of government employees that'll tell you, they hear from me on a monthly basis. Yes, our holdup is the Army Corps of Engineers in getting the permit. The reason why is because in the design, this will be the third time that that mill has, the mill pond's been pumped out and dredged. We can't keep going down that route.
Vulnerability to make a park.
We're hoping, well, that thought, but we're hoping to put with Army Corps of Engineers permissions, a silt pond or dam above that so that we don't have to go through and continue having to dredge that pond again. That's a wonderful question. At the time that all of this was done for that grant, this was what the community of Buffalo wanted. They wanted to keep the mill pond. That's the reason why they've worked on it. This will be the fourth time.
As the city of Union, I don't want to be the enemy over here. I've done a bunch of projects in Buffalo. Matter of fact, because the city took over the sewer and water, I'm not even going to guess, I'm going to say six, seven million dollars what the work's been done in Buffalo to improve the sewer, improve all your infrastructure and water. And I've been a part of that. I inherited Union Mill. I did Brownsville and we were part of that cleanup. Unfortunately, Union Mill turned out to be a very, very costly cleanup. Number one, we had to remove a lot of dirt, we had to bring it back in, we had to line it, we had to drain the pond, we had to line it. And then the upper part of the mill, which has substructure under it where the cotton was delivered on rail, similar to Buffalo, was not removed and you cannot put any type of recreation activity on that part. LMI is there now, Keene Oaks is there now, Union Mill Crossing is there now. So yeah, it took time. That was 2005 maybe, when we did Union Mill. And it took a long time for a developer to even come to look at it and then we ended up what we have. So nobody can promise that you're going to have a park. I'm sorry, I wish I could say, yeah, we're going to do a park because I don't know. And you know, this thing will be going on past my time, I can tell you that. And you know, we, involvement, community involvement will tell you what you want to see, but anything's better than a desperate piece of land sitting on two towers, in my opinion. If you get a clean bill on that property, then you can do something with it. Right now, if somebody wants to buy it, I don't know, is a private developer want to buy it as is? And you could do something with it. They'd make them get by a lot of the stuff that we can't. We can't come in and just build something on top of something that's contaminated. We can't do that as a government. We have to clean it up. But I'll field question, but like I said, I can't tell you there'll be a park, I can't tell you there'll be housing, I can't tell you what'll be there. But we don't know. But we've got to get it cleaned so we can establish what we can't do there. That's the mind goal.
Yeah, if a private person does, but from my understanding, it's simple, as long as it's not a government owned property, they don't have to do any of this cleanup. They can go ahead and start building on that. Is that great behind you? I'm asking to clean up.
Oh, you're talking about not cleaning it up?
Yeah, if it goes to a private property, from my understanding, they don't even have to worry about cleaning it up. They can build up a top of it by state law, right?
But it depends on the end use. So the way the state works and the federal law works is that there's liability with these properties, but dependent upon how much time you have with the surface, with the natural resources that are there, the cleanup becomes more stringent. So if you're thinking big industry, that's going to have a building like this, that's going to have a hard floor in it, that would be considered a cap, you could put that on top of something and be okay because you're not coming in contact with the soil. The more residential, the more green space it gets, public parks, that's going to be a more stringent cleanup there that you're going to have to make.
Like a private park?
Well, and so that's where I'm going. So South Carolina Department of Environmental Services and EPA doesn't discriminate based off of whether it is a public body or a private body that takes care of this. It's the end use of the property as to what can be left, what has to be removed and how it can be dealt with. The other thing I'll say, when financing projects like these, if it's a private developer, typically they use tax credits that are federal tax credits, either textile tax credits, brownfield tax credits, abandoned building, that is where they get their money from. That project starts at the same place that the grant money starts for the localities that trickles down through the states. Housing and urban development is where it is. I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago and I actually had a private developer speak on this and they go through the same process that a locality does as far as the cleanup plans, the projects, making sure that folks are on board with it before those tax credits and that financing source is released. So I promise you, it's the same across the board.
And I do want to reiterate what Mr. Nichols said. We really don't know till it gets dug up exactly what we can and can't do with, from our state standpoint as the current owner or them as the perceived new owner. So again, we don't know until everything comes out and it gets cleaned up.
I think that's the biggest issue with everybody against the acknowledgement.
Gang, we're violating the rules. The rules are one public comment, you had to come here, you had to sign up. We could be here all night answering questions if we don't know. I want to get us back in line. So is there anybody else that would like to come in and make any public comment to council?
Hi, David Sinclair, Union County Council. Obviously, I'm a born and raised in Buffalo, South Carolina, so this project is very passionate to me. As a matter of fact, and I think Mr. Ford would back me up on this, it was one of the main things that I said I wanted to see done while my term was on council was to try to see the cleanup. Well, when the county purchased the property, if you guys will remember, it looks nothing like it even looks today. There were two abandoned warehouses on there, it was slammed full of lumber with nails and things like that. The county came in and did what we could do as far as what we could fund that didn't have a lot of money involved, just manual labor, I guess you would say. So it's still my goal to try to make something very beneficial for the community of Buffalo there. But as your representative, I'm going to do what you guys asked me to do. So just so you know that, I want to make sure that's known upfront. I mean, I represent citizens of Buffalo, Buffalo community and the citizens of Union County as a whole. So I am here listening to your comments and trying to address your concerns. I will say this. I had a local developer come and talk to me personally that said, "I would love to take that property and build homes on there, but you'll have to clean it up first." So no, it just seems to me that we're not going to be able to do anything with the property in the shape that it's in. So the avenue that we were trying to look at was to try to be eligible for funds. So I want to ask Tyler and Thomas a question that I think's been hinted around out here, which is one I'd like to know also, is what do you suspect that it would cost to clean this land, based on your previous history?
So like I said, we have been involved in this for 20 years and part of that is managing the state's revolving loan fund for this work. And so what we see is projects like this that come through and they request financing through form of a loan. It's not a grant, it's a loan, so it is repaid. Both your private entities and your localities can tap into this as well as nonprofits. Its scales, our loan size, through that program goes anywhere from about $100,000 up to 1.5 million, dependent upon the site. There are two things as far as what is it going to cost? That is a great question. What we've heard tonight is that there's suspected debris buried. The next step will be getting in there, figuring out what it is. I can tell you though, based off of the acreage, you've got two towers that you're going to have to deal with. And if somebody wants to come in and build homes, you can't really build them around the towers. So at that point, you're looking at demolition cost, remediation cost, you're well into the seven figures with this, if not more than that. Like I said, the most, the largest loan that we've done has been 1.5 million. The most expensive cleanup in that total project has been 4 million. That was a site that was in the upper part of the state, very different from what this is. It was much larger, had the building still in place. So a lot of that was dealing with asbestos pulling it out. But based off of that, based off of what we've seen in Great Falls and in Jonesville, you're in the seven figures to start with.
My name's Jared Gordon, I live on Sweetwater. My question is, y'all put this in the city, I'm like what Tommy Ford says, we have property in Buffalo, once they build something, they annex into the city. Me, I ain't got to worry about it because I don't have nothing, I can be annexed in. But these people that's in Buffalo can ease access and go into the city. I wouldn't want to pay city and county taxes. But my thing is, it shouldn't be left up supervisors or the city council. They should put this on the ballot and let the people of Buffalo vote what they want to do this property. I understand it needs to be cleaned up. I get tired of looking at it. And right now, I told the teen center, we don't need to shoot fireworks. Don't get me wrong, they shooting better fireworks now and where they shooting them at now? They too closest to the house. I hate it for the community, but we're going to have to stop it. We can't shoot them over between the towers because it says contaminated. I don't understand this. But me, it should be the taxpayers vote to see what we're going to do with it. You got to put these houses on it? Who can pay 1,200, 1,300? Anybody in Buffalo can pay 1,300, 1,500 for houses? I don't think so. Me, put it on the ballot and let the people decide. Me, I wasn't going to come tonight because in my mind, I don't have an opinion because y'all can sit and decide what y'all want to do and they can decide what they want to do. It shouldn't be that way. The people in Union County and the city voted for these people. It should let them people say what they want to do with property instead of individuals do it. That's my opinion.
Does anybody else like to make a public comment?
Well, everybody else had two turns. Let me take two turns.
No, you can't take two turns.
Come on now, that's not fair. I just want to say that I appreciate y'all sitting here and listening, but I want to go back to the rules that you talked about at the beginning. One comment, one question. As I've sat here and listened to the other people's questions and these gentlemen here explain their answers to the questions, you know, I have more questions. So I don't think it should be limited to one question, one comment. And you know, if the people have to sit around here all night to figure out what needs to be done, that's what needs to be done. Aside from that, I agree it should be on the ballot, the people should decide because I've sat here and watched some of you sit on your phone, not pay attention to what these gentlemen had to say, and that's downright disrespectful. Also, with, you know, the comments and the questions, you know, they're not required to answer us, is what you said. Isn't it their job that they answer to their constituents?
I said they can answer if they choose.
Right, if they choose, but shouldn't that be a requirement? If you're having a public meeting where you're wanting to hear the public talk, isn't it just common courtesy to give an answer or a comment or something back to the people that you all represent? David, I appreciate everything you said, everything, but everybody that sat and didn't have anything to say and sat on their phone, that's disrespectful.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Would everybody else like to make a public comment?
How would we get the bill to go on the ballot? So what's all the reason?
That would be a county council consideration and I don't know that that can even be done. Otherwise, it would probably have to go countywide. It wouldn't be a specific to a Buffalo Fire District vote, is what I'm saying. I'd have to go and research that to answer the question. And it couldn't go on this anyways because that's already passed. We'd had to add all that in. All those references for this election had to be in by the first of August.
Well, why would we consider getting a law to make it clean up? That way it saves the damage and so does the heat since there's so many unknowns of what we're going to do to this property. to do to this property in five years after completion?
You got to clean it up before you know what you can do with it.
That's what I'm saying, why don't we get a law? What does the county say about getting a law? He just said they have laws that we can get and clean it up. Why not go that route versus a grant?
Because we still have to pay it back at the end of the day.
Exactly, taxpayers want to pay it back. I'd much rather as a taxpayer pay it back than give our property to the city, like everybody else said, that there are many concerns if us being annexed into the city, you have to pay all the taxes for taxes, and then that property going to get sold, or the city going to get all of them, and it not, it's not good for us.
Understood, yes.
Just a point of clarification on the loans. They come from the same funding source that the grant program does, and so the eligibility requirements are the same. So, anybody who borrows from that fund has to be under the state's voluntary cleanup contract program, which means that all appropriate inquiry also had to be completed at the time of purchase. So, under the current ownership with county, county is not an eligible borrower.
Dustin Ray Strahl, 316 Buffalo Street. I guess the biggest thing I'm hearing here is, is once this ball gets to rolling, let's say houses, I don't think anybody in this town wants houses built down there. I own property over in Buffalo also, but you know, you can't tell us what you're going to do with it, which I kind of understand, but at the same sense, once a train gets going, how hard is it to stop it? Once it's cleaned up, how many people's going to want to buy it? You know, who makes the choice who gets it? Who buys it, who, what gets built down there?
I don't, we're not going to be able to get rid of the property if the city didn't take it over for at least five years. That's the point in time where it would be able to transfer. I don't see there being any transfer of property until there's been at least a community meeting with y'all and an understanding to see where y'all would want to go with the property. I can't, it's five years from now, but right now, we've got to get it cleaned up before we know.
Right, I get that, but once...
With the county, or people agree with the county, that that has to happen before it's done in five years?
Once the city union owns it, right? And make sure I'm understanding this correct, city union's taking over it, correct? Okay, once they own it, do we matter anymore? Because we're the county, we're out here.
I disagree with that.
I didn't say it was the thing I asked, I asked the question.
I disagree with that. The city has ownership here in Buffalo. They do have your electricity, they do have your water, they do have your sewer, they do have a vested interest in this community. They did a lot of cleanup, helped us with a lot of cleanup work with the mill when council took it over 10 years ago, or whenever that was. They helped a lot with some of the projects that went on, at no expense to the county, the city just helped us. I get it, okay, folks, I understand. Nobody wants to be annexed, I live in the county too, okay? I get it, but I also look at these city council members, and I don't see horns and I don't see devil hooks. I truly believe that they care about this community just as much as you do, just as much as we do. We're just trying to find an end game to a problem that we were handling. That's all we're trying to do. Once we took ownership with it, it is a, it is either kick the can down the road and go clean it up, and if we don't get it cleaned up, it's only going to cost more when we go down the road to try this again. And it's eventually going to have to be done, or it's going to sit just like it is. Nobody wants to see the property continue to decay, and I sure don't want to see one of those towers roll away. So, we got to quit kicking the can down the road, and that's what council has said by agreeing to move forward, to get to this point, to hear your input. And I respect everybody's input, I do. I respect where you're coming from, because I don't want to pay city taxes either, I'll be the first to admit it, sorry, Gang.
Now, what benefit is it?
One benefit is, city does roll all their loss, all their loss over into their taxes. I think their average house tax is $5 over there, something like that. $10.
You're not contingent to the city, we own property in Buffalo, but you're not contingent to the city. That property won't be, Buffalo Creek is as far as we come, right? That's where we are, we're not over Buffalo.
That's for now, while it's sounding about this somehow, but when they also know Buffalo Creek, they come on them to the school, where Buffalo is, where their next place of building on, that's Buffalo. But I have feeling that that's going to be, we'll come across some issues with the city won't hand it, so they...
We're, they're, we're being asked to annex it, I mean.
Doesn't matter, but once they come across the creek, they're...
We're not, we're not...
...the construction is in front of school, that's still Buffalo.
But that's what I'm saying, they're going to still build there, and I should become city as well, and it's so easy to lay all those things through. But I understand what you're saying, we're being asked to annex it. They're asking for it, they want the utilities, they want it all put in, and that's what we're doing. They're asking us to put them in the city. Every lot over there is being annexed, I see. That was part of the group that came here, or we did that plan four or five years ago. This didn't start when they started building houses. And they wanted to be in the city, that was part of the agreement. The county had to take over the roads, we had to put on the infrastructure to do that.
I think one thing to do is, is trying realistically is the fact that the city can't annex, if I'm not correct, unless there's a property line that borders a certain city property. And so, in other words, the city would have to expand all the way out to the mill site before they could even make an annex in there.
Can I ask you a question? If I own the property, when I annex it, you know, I'm the holder of that property, I'm looking to show it's all within the city, it's a place, I, so, if I own the property, I can know where I want to go and what I want to do with my property, that's why I was told in the back. So, that's why I don't argue, because if you don't go in, you don't exist.
If this turns into a city project, yeah. And my question, this is a, all right, is this grant, this, whatever y'all trying to get funded or whatever, is it likely to help you? Don't y'all have to put down what y'all going to do to this, and what y'all plan on doing with this property, all in this grant? So, that's my, I'm, what we're thinking before, all right? What we going to put down? Oh, okay, we're going, we're going to clean this up, then we're going to warehouse, then we all that that. But you got to put down what you going to do with this property when you go and get spent on it.
As stated...
I got to pay a lot of money for paint, I got to pay a lot of money for this money.
Jared, as stated, the grant will be written for green space, that is all in the grant narrative, and that's how it'll be spelled out, because that's how you're going to get the money. This isn't a loan, even though we do have to beg and whine with a little bit of dignity through commerce to get this, but it's going to stipulate, this is exactly what's going to be done with the property for this purpose, and the purpose is going to be green space at this time. Again, once that money's given, it's five years after the project's completion, or you can do anything else with it.
I own four mill sites, but I can tell the people Buffalo, that mill site right there is worth more money than a lot of land around here. People, developers are buying this thing, and the question I ask you, city's taking the property, they're going to clean it up, now, when it's cleaned up, they're going to sell it, maybe to a developer. I know once it's cleaned up, it's worth a whole lot of money. The profit that the city makes off of cleaning it up and selling it, who gets that profit? The city, or Buffalo? City?
I will say this, those are, those are facts, not in evidence at this time, because the property has not sold. Again, we can't get there till it gets cleaned up.
You know what I mean, when the money's there, I mean, I know about Finland, they get the money, they keep, you know, the city's got it, and I get, it's worth a lot of money, I know about Finland, we've developed it for a lot of money.
It's not worth anything as it stands right now in the condition that it's in.
I agree, it's worth the tax rates, and y'all, everybody should know that, there's a lot of tax rates that come from that foundation.
Does anybody else like to approach the microphone and make a comment?
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Relliffe, county councilwoman, district five. I received a lot of calls from Buffalo when this came about, and I approached Philip and the council about us coming to hear from the residents, and I thought that was only fair, because y'all live here, I don't, and I think, I thought it was only fair, but I see a lot of people that were calling me, it's not here tonight, but, and I've listened to a lot of you guys, and I agree with a lot of what you all are saying. But this came about because we wanted to give you all the opportunity to express yourselves about your account, your of Buffalo, so that's why I'm here, thank you.
David, I have a question for you. Did you see just probably about 30 people in this room that showed up in Buffalo? No, no, I'm talking to David. You see that we're the only ones that really kind of, I guess you would say, hear that enough to show up, that's concerning. What would you, what do you think to that, that nobody even showed up?
It is disheartening. I mean, we have said from the start that even at our regular county council meetings, and Tommy's had his son problems, he was on council representing this district, but there is very little community involvement in community government unless there's some kind of issue. I mean, and we wish that our grant jury room was packed out every time they had a meeting there, so the community could be, not just Buffalo, but the community as a whole could be involved in knowing what decisions are made, and really what emperor is put behind those decisions that people never really see. But yeah, it is a little disheartening that there are no people here representing our community in what they're on. To make a community park and to restore those towers. I said, "Oh, no, let's put restrooms in the marble wall and concessions, and you know, just kind of keep those towers." And we actually had those towers assessed to see if they could structurally stand on their own by a white person at the time. We were told yes, but that's been several years ago, the mortar stuff has changed since then.
You already said that the towers might be taken down because they have a vested in land, so they're going to have to be destroyed, but they're still saving them.
Well, he didn't really say that, he said that it is going, a lot of it, and I actually put this on one of my county posts not too long ago, and you guys probably probably know this, but we have always said that unfortunately, the cost to renovate verse, it's going to make that decision unfortunately. But my vision is, I would love to see them, just like you guys. I was just telling somebody over here, want to go, that my grandfather and great-grandfather worked there, I mean, the mills all my life, I mean, those towers have set them up to me as much as they are you guys, so I would love to, I would, I still would love to see those towers be able to remain standing, but unfortunately, the cost will probably mitigate that.
And that is exactly what was said, there could clean up, but you've got to get in and remove the asbestos and the lead paint, and that adds a lot of expense to the project. Yeah, and to Ms. Wade's point, what I was stating was the rules put forward by the Association of Counties on public comment, it wasn't one question, it was limit yourself to one time at the mic, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but also that I wasn't going to use a stopwatch either. The reason why is, we want to keep it on track if people have something to say. We did open that up because it seems like we're all in the same agreement, we're all suffering from the same thing. What's, what's going to happen in five years? And we just, we, all we know is, at this time is, we can't tell you until we get it cleaned up. We got to find out what's in the ground and get it removed, that's the expense. We can get grant money now. What I mean by grant money, there's no such thing as free grant money, grant money's coming from somewhere, but it is not coming out of our savings account and our dollars that affect our operations or our county taxpayers' tax levy. So, that's the reason why we've gone down this road, and I really want to give thanks to city council for even considering this as an option to help us out.
I just want to, what you just said, I don't know if anybody else is talking about it feels that way, but the way you said that, that's one of my concerns, is because it sounds like there's a shady backdoor stuff.
No, I can assure you...
I can say that's what you did, but that's the way I interpreted that, but we can't tell you, you got to get in there and see what's sitting there, what we can do to it, you know?
But is that not the truth, though? Think, is that not the truth? We don't know what is underneath there. Gang has got to be cleaned up before we can do anything.
I'm asking, well, why can't the city say, "All right, after we get it cleaned up, we're going to do it back to the community"?
And because we can't, they can't do that because we don't have a grant yet. We have got to make a request for a grant, and we can't knowingly go out and make those. We have got to go and get the grant to clean it up. Then you can get, once cleanup's done, then you can get down to the brass tacks of the issue.
But once you get the grant, at that point, it's already in the city's possession, correct?
Yeah.
So, then there's no remedy for that?
But that's the only way they can clean it up.
Wait a minute, I'm not mistaken, it's not what the meaning was, they just told you all what was under there. They know what's under there.
No, they know the amounts.
The amount of...
Approximate amounts, they don't know the individual items.
But they don't know if it's even, even if the stuff has to be removed either, correct? You can get in there and that stuff may not be debris, and it may have to be removed. And then the contaminants are very minute, is that right? They're barely over the limits of cleaning up the ground.
Yeah, so we do have some residential use exceedances on site as is. We do have some commercial industrial use exceedances on site right now. We know of what we call subsurface anomalies, which is a trade term for unknown, because the cost to actually dig or make pest pits or soil borers or whatever can be pretty extravagant. The main thing here is, we don't know what's on the ground. If it's brick or concrete, that's a whole nother story from it being asbestos debris, because it's a tenfold cost to actually dispose of asbestos as would be constructive debris. So, the next step, if you were to get any grant money, would be to, you know, venture into that. What is in the subsurface? What's in that subsurface tunnel there? Is that full of asbestos? Those are the kind of questions we'll have to answer as we go forward, hence why I think we're trying to pursue even more grants, because none of that would be cheap at all, even the assessment portion can be costly.
Instead of digging, would they, could there not be a way to cover over top everything? Say if you put, if you can see the dirt on top of everything, would that bury it far enough that it would be fast to the lives of those that dig up?
That's a good question. You get into a touching subject, if, this is all hypothetical, if there is asbestos in the ground and you leave it there, it is forever deep in asbestos landfill, which can really hinder its end use. So, that's really not a great way to go about it if that is there. Construction debris in general also can inhibit redevelopment, because you can't really build on top of it, it's hard to get great compaction when you have a lot of debris. So, a developer will be, or even a green space, or any sort of end use, you really would like to get rid of any sort of debris, because you don't have your pavements, and you have a more found, foundation for walking paths, or for truck use, or anything. And if you're going to regrade the place, you don't want your truck upon to avoid either of it. We don't know exactly what's in the subsurface, but that picture I showed you just showed max stats of, again, what we call these anomalies, where you just have changes in your compaction. That's how we kind of identify things before.
I don't know what you're saying. All right, so if it hasn't been done, because we don't know that it's asbestos, how would be, so who would determine if asbestos laid there before they had anything to it? If we had done that, I would know that that's asbestos material.
But like, right now, with the land, what is considered contaminated, what has to be done? That's what I'm saying, if, say if I bought the property, and I wasn't going to build a house on it, I wasn't, wasn't to dig anything, who's going to come in and say that I can't build a house there because there's something that might be under the ground?
Yeah, well, it's a liability on the owner. If you were to own the property and then find asbestos, you are responsible for the